Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Caputa.
Here.
Shuldorff.
Here.
Henke.
Here.
Pagano. Person. Ziam. Harris. Jones. Egan.
Here.
Next item on approval minutes. Meeting executive minutes from September 24th. And the work session minutes is September 20th. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Executive minutes from September 24th. Hearing none. Councilman Shuldorff moves to approve the minutes. Second by myself. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is special presentation. Senator Tim Green, his legislative report.
Thank you. I have had distributed a little presentation to go through. I'll try to go through it quickly because I know you have other things on the agenda. First thing I want to talk to you about that's first is basically all the legislation that is constantly introduced, about 10% of it, if you look at it, has to deal with municipal government in some way. Quickly to go over what I touched upon back in May was one of the bigger issues that passed this past year was the small cell deployment that had a two-year sunset on it. But one of the key things that we worked together in Jefferson City, you have a state municipal league, a St. Louis County municipal league, and the municipalities throughout the state have their own lobbyists, is we work together when something comes up that negatively impacts all the municipal governments throughout the entire state and the region. When we were doing the small cell deployment that AT&amp;T and CenturyLink and several others were trying to get passed and working with the Muni League, the last minute came up is the cable companies wanted to lower or possibly eliminate their franchise fees, which was an issue that didn't even deal with it, but they were using their influence to try to lower. With a strong presence throughout the Capitol, we were able to stop that. And that issue will probably be coming up again next year. There is always a continual attempt to put some type of cap on the sales tax with state and municipal sales taxes. That was pushed strongly, is a general issue. The industry as a whole, and when I say the industry, once again, it's all the municipal leagues and their lobbyists coming together and working because when these issues come up, it's kind of merging together quickly and dissolving. The same thing for the businesses licensed too. What's probably going to affect both the state and municipal governments in debate this next year, and there was a seminar down at the Missouri Municipal League I sat with Mayor Schneider at, is the Wayfair decision. And basically, for years, you've had the issue about internet sales versus retail sales and the unfairness to the retailers because they're paying the sales taxes and collecting them where the internet sales were not. That's going to be an issue that's going to be debated, and there's about 10 different variations of things they have to change. It's going to be a very time-consuming piece of legislation. On a good day, I would say it's got a chance, but there's just a lot of issues with not a lot of new legislators coming up. So that will be coming up as well as we're trying to change a few things that is an industry for the Muni League is failure to appear. Once again, that kind of got bogged down on other issues. Look forward to trying to resolve something without dealing with Senate Bill 5, even though I can assure you some of the things in Senate Bill 5 were not beneficial to the city of Florissant. Trying to change some of those issues other than failure to appear will be difficult. Several of the council members I have talked to extensively on the leasing of apartments in the legislation that has continually tried to stop the city of Florissant, what they have done proactively. We were successful the last three years. I told Councilwoman Pagano that the good news was is that individual was turned out, but the bad news is is there'll be another legislator that'll take that issue on. So to put in perspective, what you're dealing with daily is in the last paragraph of the presentation or the letter I put out to you is in 2018, this November, there will be at least minimum 44 new state representatives and eight new state senators. And in 2020, there will be 12 new state senators and a minimum of 46 new state representatives. So if you add those two together for the year of 18 and 20, that's 90 minimum, and there's 163 members. So that means there'll be 90 in the next two election cycles compared to 70 that are there and 20 of the 34 state senators. So the issue of constantly trying to articulate and educate to all these new legislators, the issues have consequences, and sometimes it's a job to educate these new legislators what the consequences could be. So that's why it's just a continual pattern with term limits that all municipalities and all interests are going to have in the state of Missouri. Just to give you an idea, because revenue does play into municipal government as well. If Proposition D was to pass, they're predicting that's the gas tax, anywhere from 300 to 400 million new dollars. The governor has his new priorities that cost money and it's job training and several other things. So a lot of people are wondering what new items will be debated for possible revenues for the state, and one of them will be probably sports betting because of the recent Supreme Court decision in May. The boats are trying to limit sports betting to just the boats so that they continue with that. So that is an issue. There'll be discussions probably on VLTs, video lottery terminals. I think if you've seen, you're seeing more and more when you go into these court shops, little slot machines in them. And they're actually illegal, but more and more people are doing it. So when it gets so much, and I know there was a news story because the police chief of Florissant made sure they were out of Florissant back in April, I think that news story was, but they're popping up all over, anywhere you go. So there's probably going to be discussion on that and the revenues it would bring in. And then that discussion I told you about internet sales versus retailers, if they were to get something similar to what North Dakota's doing, they're figuring it could be anywhere from 180 million to 275 million in revenues. So I hope that gives you kind of an update of what's coming up, and as always, you never know what's coming up as well.
Thanks, Senator. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, Tim, I know Gary Cross was the guy that was pushing the legislation on our A&amp;R. How will that go to a new legislator? Will that be through a committee passed down?
No, it'll be someone that'll take that issue up, just like Representative Cross did, and try to pursue it. So it'll just be a newer legislator taking up the issue.
So it'll be a lobbyist going to a legislator saying, "We need to go after this."
Yes. That's a lot of times what happens is once your elected interest groups will come to you, they might see you. Maybe with Mr. Cross, it was more real estate or apartment building owners that pushed that issue. They'll go to reach out to legislators that possibly have an interest financially in that, knowing it. And I say that in a sincere way because our legislature is a citizen's legislature. So the whole idea, intent, is to have citizens and what they do in the private sector, their input in the legislative process.
And what about the governor? Will the governor be looking into our apprenticeship programs, Tim, as far as education?
Job training is what he's pursuing. I was at a Missouri Economic Development Conference, the governor's, in September, early September, and he had the governor of Tennessee there. And what they have in Tennessee is something called a Tennessee Promise, and it's trying to promote free education at the community college level. The apprenticeship programs you're discussing is they are funded through our members and contractors coming to an agreement, and they're privately funded, and they don't cost the taxpayers any money. And it's quite, if you look at it, the way they operate and administer, it's a free education, on-the-job training, but it's a continual job for that industry to get individuals that will listen to the benefit those programs provide at no cost to the taxpayer.
Okay. Tim, another thing, I would like to thank you for all the work you do. I don't think the public knows how much you work behind the scenes to keep us up to date with some of the things we look at or go after. So I thought I would share that with the public, that you do stay in touch with us, and there's quite a few calls from council members to you asking you advice and different things that we can do to stop things from happening. So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Shuldorff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator, with the influx of new legislators and senators over the next two years, two and a half years, do you think the internet sales tax would be two or three sessions away coming to fruition if it did?
That's a very valid assessment because you are going to have those legislators, no matter what, say, "I will vote for no taxes," even though this issue is more of a fairness issue for those retailers that have businesses that are not on the same competitive track. So I know, listening to the Department of Revenue, they're going to pursue it, and the only way they would pursue it is if they had the governor's support of pursuing it. But as you have all seen, and the mayor's been active in it, and he has reported, trying to get a gas tax proposal on the ballot as our roads and bridges crumble, has taken 16 years. So that kind of puts it in perspective. But at our age, aren't we supposed to say the glass is half-full and not half-empty and be more optimistic?
And do you know, does every state that borders Missouri have an internet sales tax? Is that correct? Or is that...
No. There's going to be all these states acting upon it because the court decision just came down recently, and a lot of states were waiting on the court decision of the Wayfair versus North Dakota.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Shuldorff. Mr. Egan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Senator. I might be asking you to pull your crystal ball out. My question is, with your ear to the ground in Jefferson City, do you foresee a switch in the balance of the Democrats and Republicans in legislature? And if so, how will that impact the city of Florissant?
I do not see a major switch in the upcoming election. The switch that you might see more is when redistricting takes place in 2022. But the way the districts are designed, and some of that will depend upon this initiative, Green Missouri, that you, one of the propositions you'll be seeing on the ballot, is to try to take less political tracking out of the redistricting process. And I think that's when you might see more switches, but in the foreseeable future, I don't see much switching.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator, for your presentation. Keep up the good work and looking forward to hearing to you again. Hopefully some better news.
Yes. Thank you all. Take care.
Next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens, which we have none. Next item is communications, which we have none. Next item is public hearing. Public hearing number 1808027 was open on August 27th, 2018, and postponed to this date. Is the petitioner present?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Juanita Galette, and address 15420 Fort de France Lane.
Mr. Hassel, do you...
Thank you, Mr. President. As you may recall, at the last council meeting, I indicated that the city had some grave concerns about some situations that took place with respect to the operation of the banquet event center. And I recounted for the city council as well as Ms. Galette what had taken place. Following the council meeting, I had the pleasure of speaking with your husband.
Yes, sir.
And he sent an email at my suggestion to the city clerk in an attempt to try to get clarification as to precisely what you were asking for as opposed to the event banquet center operation. I think we received that email on September 25th, and I responded to your husband on September 27th outlining a series of additional questions that I had concerning the relationship between you and Sonia Dulick, who is actually the applicant. And I'm not going to call her the holder of the special use permit because there's an LLC that appears to be, in fact, the applicant for the special use permit. I have not received a response to that email. I hope that your husband received it. And my advice to the city council is until we get a response to the questions that I posed in that email, that we continue this matter because the application, I believe that the application will have to be amended to accommodate your request. So we need that information before we can process the application.
May I be permitted to speak?
Sure. Yes, sir.
I'm Mark Galette, and I'm the husband, and I want to make a statement. I have not received any email, and I had on the email to give me a call if, in fact, there was any additional information to be added. And I am the one that's contacted me as of today, and I have not received any email.
Well, I hope that I sent it to the right email address. If I didn't, I apologize. It's operator error. I have a, I certainly have a printed copy because I included Karen Goodwin. I included the mayor. I know I included council president Caputa. I don't recall who else I included on there. I certainly utilized the email address that I saw that you had sent to Karen Goodwin, and I didn't have a phone number, otherwise I would have called you.
Yes, sir. Which was all included in the email. And at this point, it's a critical moment in our proposal that this issue be approved because of the fact that the contract is being expired, and we needed that to be approved in order to extend the contract. We've done everything within our power in regards to satisfying this council, and we can't understand why we're running across so many, so much hindrance and deterrence in order for us to continue to move forward.
The problem, sir, is with the group, you two and with Sonia, correct? You two are in the same business together, you're partners in the businesses, correct?
Not necessarily correct. We're operating, acting as management of the particular, her business. We're not part of her business. We're managing her business. At the same time, we're preparing to start our business, and we needed that time in order to be up and running when her contract expires. We're not part of her business. We're managing her business until our business was to be activated, to be activated. And now there's been a hindrance in our business to move forward.
What I have stated before is if we allow the adult daycare center to be in the same building affiliated with the same as Metro Event Center, that seems to me that I am, I'm only one vote, I'm condoning what happens at the event center. All the problems that we have had there throughout the past, from my residents, I hear about it almost every weekend when there's an event up there, I get phone calls from noise, trash, whatever it is. It's always something. Lot of it's, lot of it's, I can take care of it myself. Some of it I can't. Where we have had times in the past where the police have been involved on several occasions. And the residents that live around there are not for this event center at all. They need, and which, being affiliated with it, it seems like we're condoning what goes on during the event center. Do you understand where we're coming from?
I understand. I understand what you're understanding, sir, but you're not understanding clearly that Metro will not exist. Metro will not exist.
How do we know that?
Because their license expires.
Is that, is that a fact?
That's according to the chief.
Is that, is that in paper? Is that in the contract?
Right. She's spoken to the chief of Laurie, and we have an understanding with Chief Laurie that when we come on board, Metro no longer exists. And I'm trying to explain it in so many ways, and I believe my wife has done so numerous times when she confronts you all with these issues. Metro does not exist. It's only pending the approval of grace and mercy, then Metro no longer exists. You're postponing...
That's not guaranteed, sir.
It has to be guaranteed. Metro don't have a license after the end of the month. It doesn't have a license. It's December the 31st. It won't exist. Once we get approval, we'll be operating on a grace and mercy. And we continue to, this reason why we're here, because we're submitting a proposal so that we can take, in fact, take over and counsel out Metro. She's no longer working Metro. She's not available. That's why she's not here. She's not working Metro. We're keeping it active so that we can prepare to take over that location. But as you continue to postpone it, you're making it difficult for us to start our venture to grace and mercy.
See, now, you're saying now, sir, that the contract will be up October, at the end of this month, correct?
Right. And we have to get it...
Then recently, you had, to where you said at first it was going to be the end of the year, to where you're going to go do the rest of the events you had scheduled for the rest of the year, and then that would be the end of it. Which one is it? One or the other?
Okay. Well, understand, it will no longer be operating under the Metro. Understand, Metro had to be existing as far as the contract concerned. It was our understanding when we were talking to the landlord that we didn't have any problems getting approved by the landlord for grace and mercy. We was under the understanding, we was going to continue to operate those existing contracts that was already pre-scheduled prior to us taking our interest into her business. They were already pre-scheduled, already to have these events. But what we're trying to do is change the tone of things. When Metro is no longer existing, we're going to be operating out of grace and mercy, out of grace and mercy, and we was going to take over her contracts in order so, to fulfill her contract so that she won't run into any legal problems with already having scheduled these events and taking the people money. It's going, it would be a chaos if we don't do what we're doing. We're actually trying to keep the peace. You know, we're actually not getting paid to do what we're doing, and we're trying to keep the peace. And it's all based on you approving this proposal. If you don't approve this proposal, you're going, it's going to be even crazier. You know, we're just trying to keep the peace. We get this thing approved, we can move on with our life. We won't even have to deal with you all anymore. You won't hear any issue with the neighbors because we're not aware of any trash. We're not aware of any noises that's taking place between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. We're not aware of any of that taking place, you know? We only hear about that with you. No one brought that to our attention other than those other issues which we had no control over. We were not even open during the time of those other issues, and it could have been other night clubs that was open already. They were open. We wasn't open, but no one is addressing those other clubs that were open during that time of the incident, and there were people that was congregated in those areas. So we're not taking responsibility as our working ethics, but as concerned citizen. We are concerned because we are in the neighborhood. We live out there. We're concerned about what goes on in the neighborhood. We've already talked to different people. We said that we would invite the neighborhood watch to come and to bring those issues to us so we can address those issues. We're just trying to work with the community. We got a lot of things planned in the future. We're involved in Toys for Tots. We got another program that we plan on feeding the hungry folks, you know, that's in need for November. We got these things already set up, ready to move forward. We're outreach ministries. And again, during this particular time, we've been deferred. We have not been getting paid. We've been keeping the peace because we understand the situation that Sonia Dulick is under. She's not able to run the business because of her job conflict. So we stepped in and we said, "Well, we'll continue to operate your business while we're preparing our business and take over that location." But the hindrance that we're receiving from here is not seem to be fair when we see other business that's up and running, they're operating under the same amendment, you know? And those issues have been done in the past with a bad name, of course, was given a bad name. But that bad name is not grace and mercy, and you're not giving us an opportunity. You're not giving us a chance to do good in the community, and that's what we do. And I believe this is unfair, and whoever's listening to this, I believe they would be with us. And we're trying to keep it low-key. We're trying to keep it peaceful, but it's at this point, this is critical. This is our last opportunity to get this approved.
Ms. Pagano.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I have a few questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Writing and then trying to remember from previous meetings. What is your relationship to Sonia?
May I ask that question? We used to have our service there. She leased the building out to us. So we had our church service there for two years. We was there. So we're familiar with Sonia Dulick for two years because that's where we had our service, and we seen that she was in need, and we prayed with her, and we said we would help her. And this is all about what we're doing. We're all about helping people, and we're not even getting people to help us help people, you know?
Okay. I appreciate that. So there's no family connection or anything that...
No. No. We leased the property from her for two years where we had church service before we moved to Limburg.
So, and then she made you managers or managing partners?
She said she couldn't take it no more.
Or you're saying that you were the managers of this establishment, correct?
She couldn't handle the business no more.
Okay. But you took over being in charge of the business, correct?
Yeah. We said we would assume her events.
Okay. So when these incidents happen, which I, we have not, I have not received a report of when or how you were in charge at that time, whether this happened as soon as you closed the doors and it was locked, and you're saying you weren't open, but these incidents happened more or less on your watch, correct?
We are only aware of one incident that happened on our watch.
Right.
One incident that happened on our watch.
Well, that's one incident, but I haven't seen any of the reports. So I'm just trying to make heads or tails. And I'm not saying what you're doing is a bad thing. I think you're very good and good for the community. very good and, and, and good for the community. These are just my concerns. And my concern is the lease with Sonia, with, I, I don't know who she's leasing from. I don't know the owners of that property. That is up in October, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So you having no relationship at all, but to me Sonia's putting you in a bind because she's messed up the problem over here.
Exactly. We wasn't that aware.
Why wouldn't that lease then, you let it go null and void, and establish a new lease with just you two, and don't worry about Sonia. That's, that's her mess to clean up. And if she made contracts on that, because I know that, I, I will not vote for an events center with a daycare because to me it did not even make sense. So I don't know why I wouldn't just take Sonia and just say, hm, we tried to help you. You more or less screwed up our whole thing, and we're going to start fresh. And I would assume that the landlord would also feel the same. I mean, that's just a few of mine. But for you to say that I'm going to have the daycare, and I, and I understand, and you, you sound like very giving people, and want to do the best for Sonia, but her events, what happens, just in case, because I don't know if you know the people who have already booked those, those venue, you know, your venue. What if there's a problem then? Now you're in trouble. You're in trouble. And it wasn't even your problem. It was Sonia who booked them. So those are, those are my concerns. And that's why I'm really having a hard time with this, with leasing landlords, that I would rather see Sonia totally out and you. That doesn't guarantee you yes, but it just guarantees that I would like to see her out. But you go ahead.
May I speak and address that question?
Sure.
That was the whole purpose of submitting their email to the city clerk, was, was taking Metro Link out of the picture and to do a change to read grace and mercy. So we've vamped that out already. We supposed to be addressing that today. Metro's no longer exists in the conversation.
But there's a contract with, Sonia is on the lease of the contract, right?
Sonia is on the lease of the contract.
Exactly. But her contract is expiring, is what you're, you're telling me, in October.
Exactly.
Okay. So I'm saying Sonia, whoever Sonia, seems to be the problem. You're, this should never expire for you because you would be a new tenant to these people. Not Sonia, you. If you can get the lease then on your own, I would take Sonia. Let that lease expire. I'm sure the man or the owner doesn't have that already. There's not a line waiting behind you for that property. And then why wouldn't you go into it on your own?
Ma'am, that's what we're saying. We're saying.
You're not, you're, no, you're telling me that you're going on with Sonia and you're not, you're transferring.
We're not going on with Sonia. Sonia.
I would like to see a lease in your name with Sonia off of it, that I know you are the only two that have anything to do with that property. And I'm not worried about Sonia's events because I wouldn't do them throughout the rest of the year. That's, does that make sense?
That was also indicated on the lease. The lease that we have said Sonia's name will be taken off, and it will be put in grace and mercy after the end of this month. But we needed something for the approval to ensure that the landlord, that we would be approved. Sonia, Sonia's name at the end of the month will not be on the lease. And when we get something approval from you all, we can submit to the landlord, which would satisfy the landlord. That's what we have to satisfy, based on the approval we're here. That's why we was trying to get it earlier, to satisfy the landlord that it would be in grace and mercy. Sonia's no longer exists.
But I don't have that agreement. I don't, I don't.
It was submitted in our package, a copy of our lease that included in, with our name. Also, I'm quite sure the city clerk would have provided you with a copy of the email, what I request to rescind Metro Link and to add, I keep saying Metro Link, Metro Clubhouse, and to add, change to read grace and mercy.
So if this were still to go through, how many contracts does Sonia still have for?
How many contracts? Did it end of the?
Till the end of the year. There are, I would say, less than twenty.
Less than twenty from October, this date to December thirty first?
And the majority of the, there are some parties, there are some parties, but the majority of the events are like a church breakfast and Veterans Day celebration and Toys for Tots event, things like that. Feeding the needy for Thanksgiving, things like that. But as far as parties, I can't count, but it's probably, this is the month of October. We have one, two, three, four, five, about five in October, five or six in October. And in November, there's hardly any parties. It's just more Veterans Day and Election Day party. And there's probably about two or three in November. And in December, we have one, two, three, something like that. But in, under twenty is with the other things like Toys for Tots and things like that.
Okay, so, and this would be my final question. I'm sorry. If Sonia knew that this lease was expiring in October, why would she plan twenty events after the expiration of her lease?
Well, we can't speak on that.
Right, but you're willing to take up the slack. That's what I'm asking. You're willing to take up the slack for, why would she schedule twenty events if she wasn't going to have a lease in October? So that, that's another concern of mine. But you can go ahead. I'm sorry, I'd be like.
Thank you, Ms. Pagano. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, my concern is, I've had, that, that sounds like a mess to me, what's going on over there now. My concern is, that's not my word, it's Jeff's. And we have a lot of residents call each council person with concerns. I've had about ten calls from residents that back up to you guys', where you guys are located over there. And they, open and honest with me, Mr. Jones, would, would you live over here and put up with this? And I would not. I mean, people partying out backside, the trash out back. I mean, these are calls that we get, you guys, on a regular basis. That's what we're here for. This is the feedback. This is our job, is to take these calls. But when the lady said to me, I live behind there and there's shootings going on, would you put up with this, Mr. Jones? I would not do that. I got little children and I would live back here. No, I would be up here putting the mayor in a headlock saying, what's going on? There are shootings up at the shopping center. That is my concern. My concern is the residents that live there. And you guys, we want you to be here. We are open arms. We want businesses here. We're waving people in. We're here to work with you. But that mess you guys just described just now, you guys are taking on somebody else's stuff, but, but it's expiring. That, that sounds like a big mess to me. I'll let Jeff handle that part. But the residents calling you guys, it's out of hand. It, it's, it's, it's unacceptable.
And I understand. Can I address that? We're, again, not aware of any trash. We, we take pride in making sure there's no trash. We pick up the trash. We have a lock on the trash.
You want me to show you some pictures that I probably still have on my phone of all the trash that been dumped back there?
Yeah, I understand when we became management over Metro, whatever happened before July first with Sonia's dealing. But after I talked to Mayor Lauer, I'm not mayor, I'm sorry, mayor, chief, chief of police, everything has been exactly what we discussed. I have went, dotted every I, crossed every T, but I understand whatever happened before, that still falls on Metro. But we, but I understand also with councilwoman here, I understand strictly. And we have talked about that. But it was with the landlord, we were just going to move on into grace and mercy with Metro, and then Metro was no longer. At the end of this month, Metro's lease is up. But there was some, we talked to the landlord, we talked to the police, the chief of police, because of these people that paid money, we were just, just trying to accommodate them because they paid money for the, the events. That was the only thing. Her license expires December thirty first. That's for a fact. Everything just expires. And we just want to get on with grace and mercy. But that's why we continue, we were asking to continue on with the events, because the people paid their money. Even though it goes right back when, they can sue Sonia Dulick, they can sue her, whatever. It was just some of the people, the majority of the people, made all of the people live in the community that set up the events. That's, that's all we were doing. That's why we were doing that. But I understand strictly what you're saying. But that was the only reason we did that. We wanted to do that. I'm ready to just start grace and mercy.
As per the email that was submitted, was to rescind the, the issue with Metro Clubhouse and to start anew with grace and mercy. So even today, we're not even supposed to be addressing Metro Clubhouse because it's been rescinded per our request.
Mr. Hassel?
Here's the confusion that lies, Mr. Gullett. Yes, you sent an email asking to rescind the special use permit that was issued to Metropolitan Events LLC Sonia Dulick. My reply is, you don't have the authority to ask the city council to rescind a special use permit that was given to Sonia Dulick. She's the only one that can ask for that rescission. And then this evening I hear you saying that really you want to continue on with the special events, which would be a transfer of a special use permit, not a rescission or revocation of a special use permit. And that's what I tried to clarify in the email that I sent to you. So just so we're clear, in 2016, the city council granted a special use permit to Metropolitan Events LLC, and the applicant was Sonia Dulick. An application was then submitted by Sonia Dulick, doing business as Grace and Mercy Adult Program. It was subsequently amended to indicate that the applicant really was Grace and Mercy Adult Program Roman numeral two LLC, again, under the name of Sonia Dulick. Juanita Gullett was identified as an agent for Sonia Dulick. So the application was signed by Sonia. And that's what we're trying to clarify for you, that in, if, if the two of you, under the name of Grace and Mercy, want to make an application, then you need to clarify that you, not Sonia Dulick, are the applicant. And then we need clarity as to what you're asking for. I understand that you're asking for an adult day program. But now I heard you this evening say that you still, because there's bookings, you want to continue with an event banquet center. But you don't hold that special use permit. Sonia Dulick and Metropolitan holds that special use permit. So we, we can't, the city council can't give you the authority to run that, that banquet center unless and until we get something from Sonia Dulick saying, I'm transferring it to you, or I want to revoke it. I want to stop it. We're not going to have any more banquet event centers. That's your options. And that's what we've tried to clarify now for several months, is who is in charge of the operations? Because the application says it's Sonia Dulick. Therein lies the problem. And in less and until, and this is what I asked Mr. Gullett to do, to explain in an email in reference to the application, and you have to have the application in front of you, I think, in order to appreciate what I'm saying, because Sonia Dulick is the applicant. So in order to take her place, as Councilmember Pagano was saying, we need to see, and you keep talking about a license. I suspect she has a lease on the premises, and I asked for a copy of the lease. That's not our business. But if in fact her lease is expiring, and I've heard two different dates, November one, and then I heard December thirty one. But if her lease is expiring, we can take that into consideration. But again, we need to make sure that the proper persons are making these applications. Because, and I, I won't bore you with this, but we've had instances where people have come before this city council and who have asked for permission to have an operation, then somebody else comes up and says, wait a minute. I didn't agree to that. And in this case, I'm talking about Sonia Dulick. We have not had her come before this body and say, I agree. I'm out of the business. I want to transfer it, or I want to revoke it, or whatever is going to happen. And until that happens, the city council and I are really walking around with our hands tied behind our back because we don't have the proper people.
Yes, sir. Let me respond to that. As my wife, Juanita Gullett, is being the agent on speaking on behalf of Sonia Dulick, that's another form of power of attorney in regards to.
That's not a power of attorney.
Speaking on behalf of the Metro Link situation, because she's representing, she was allowed to represent the Metro Link, Sandra Dulick, Metro Clubhouse. Why does this Metro Link keep coming to my mind? The Metro Clubhouse in this incident. You know, so the, the words we would speak would be on behalf of Sandra Dulick, who has no interest in Metro Clubhouse, nor does she have any interest in grace and mercy. She's not necessarily responding to anything that we are proposing at this time. And, and it would only cause more hindrance in, in our case, you know, because of the fact that she quit. And I don't know, in the real estate business, when you quit, you, you, you quit. You know, and based on the, the past history and behavior of, you know, Sandra Dulick, and I'm just asking that, you would accept, you know, our voice in this council meeting so that we can perhaps move on and get approval for grace and, and mercy. Because it's, we're getting at the wire here. We've been in this particular court for quite some time, trying to explain something that we didn't understand, the politics of it. We were just thinking we were doing the right things. And many occasion, we would approach you all for advice because we were doing the right thing. You know, and we're, and that's where we came with the good intentions of doing the right thing. We didn't think we was going to have any problems because eventually it would be turned over to Grace and Mercy and Sandra Dulick. Ms. Sandra Dulick would not have been no longer in the picture. And then we would move on and honor her contracts that were already submitted. And that was one of the agreements that we said as we was preparing for grace and mercy, that we would honor her contract, you know. And we thought that was the right thing to do, you know. And, and the view, the court would understand what we're trying to do. And we've taken every, when we've spoken to Chief Laurie as far how things can be better. And since that time, since we've been on board, on our watch, things have been better. But an incident that wasn't in our control could very well happen to anybody, anytime. You have to associate somebody coming off the street with your particular business as far as gunshots is concerned. That was somebody who was an isolated incident. And we as concerned residents, we wouldn't want that in our neighbors, you know, in our neighborhood either. Of course we wouldn't, you know, as concerned citizens. That's something we're not pursuing. And we're not advocating at the same time. We have a peaceful Christian relationship with those that we do come in contact with it. And we believe that they're respecting us. And we made that decision not to get involved with teenagers. Teenagers have a tendency to hang around. And we're not having those problems anymore. So the issues that you've had in the past, it longer exists at this time. And we appreciate the decision that you, you know, it's only our intentions to do good in the community. And I, I believe that we got some good people here in the council, and you can see things in our favor.
A few more questions, sir. Mr. Henke?
Yes, thank you. Obviously, there's some confusion here tonight, all right? A couple things. The confusion on the ownership, the separation of the parties here. When you said these events, you're honoring contractual events, but in fact, some of these events are ones that you guys have planned. You've planned the ones for the dinners at Thanksgiving or the Veterans things. These are things you said you wanted to do. So they're not honoring the events of the prior owner. We have another council meeting before the end of this month, before the expiration. First of all, I want to find out exactly when does this lease expire? Is it October, end of October, or is it the end of December? I want to see something that's, that, that on paper severs these ties with the, the parties because that's where the whole thing is. And, but, but here's the thing. Council president, we want to get this stuff clarified. Mr. Hassel has given you the email. If you haven't gotten it, I'm sure you will get it. I'm going to move to continue this public hearing to, to the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Henke.
Motion on the floor.
May I say one more thing? What councilman or city attorney requested sending the lease, the expired, when the lease expired? expired, when the lease expires, we'll send that tomorrow. When the license expires, everything you just gave us to do, we're going to send that out tomorrow morning, get that all taken care of. And, uh, if we can get the email sent to us, uh, what attorney requested, we'll have all of that taken care of.
Let me clarify real quick. The, um, the email was sent to, hang on, let me open that up again. M E L L U G at yahoo dot com.
Right. And sometimes stuff goes into spam, and no one called and confirmed the receipt. I could have looked in my spam or something of that nature.
No, I will forward.
And I would definitely would have responded to it. But as far as those, uh, the lease, you were provided a copy of the lease that expires on the thirty, October thirty-first. You was, uh, provided a copy, and then also mentioned in that lease that upon expiration, that it would be turned over to Grace and Mercy. So I thought you all, that it would be, the new lease would be under Grace and Mercy as of October thirty-first, and that was in the lease agreement that we provided for you originally in the package. And now you're telling me you hadn't received it, but we can send you another copy, but we shouldn't let that be a hindrance because you were-
Well, my understanding, my understanding now is that you said you're going to send us the requested information, okay? Until we receive this requested information, we have no op, I have no option but to continue this public hearing. You've got another meeting in, in this month. If in fact it does expire at the end of this month, or we want to find out. But I'd also like to ask that we have a list of the events that are scheduled throughout the rest of this year and where we can make a decision on those. But if you're amenable or agreeable to give the requested information to move forward on this public hearing, that's fine. I'm making a motion to continue this public hearing.
All right. Mr. Egan.
Thank you. All right, you've used a couple of words I want to use back at you. You said, the politics is at play. Politics is not at play. This has not been done correctly. You also said, we would have chaos. We have chaos right now up there. If, let me talk. I've listened to you for forty-five minutes, and it's my turn. If we approve this, and if I'm not, if I'm looking at this wrong, Mr. Hassel, you tell me I'm looking at this wrong. If we approve this, we're going to approve a daycare and an event center operating in the same location, and I am not going to do that. Now, you could say, oh, no, we'll never ever, ever, ever going to do that. We're great, good, good, wonderful human beings, we want to do great things, we all hate chaos, but you would still have the legal authority to do that. And I'm not going to give you that authority. I have no intention of voting that, but I'm only one of nine votes, and I will not do it. The other question, on the daycare, I still have questions on the daycare. I think there's three bathrooms in that place, and I haven't been told how many people are coming in there. And if you're going to tell me we're going to wait until after we get, uh, approval from the state, and then, and then we're going to have eighteen or thirty people using three bathrooms, I'm not going to approve it. That's where I'm at. I am not going to approve this, and I'll let you have a response, and I'll second his motion to con- continue this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Egan.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. I just want to respond to that. When I mentioned politics, I didn't say politics at hand. I said, I'm not familiar with politics. And that's why I went to different councilmen for assist, I wanted to clarify that. I didn't say politics at hand. I said, I'm not familiar with politics. Also, I didn't mention the word chaos. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't say, uh, and, and what aspect did I mention? Chaos, uh, maybe in the fact that we wasn't aware that it would be such a hindrance in, uh, submitting our proposal, because we're not familiar with the politics of this procedure. Not that there's politics at hand, and, and I thank you for being upfront and upright that it was your intention not to approve it in, in the first place. And I just wanted some advice on what I need to do in order to get it approved, because I understand that it was your intention not to approve it in the first place. So our postponement was a waste of our time, since you had already decided you wasn't going to approve it.
Perhaps you, you pirated a business there, and I don't know if we, uh, how long you've been operating this business, perhaps this special use permit should have been asked for a transfer months ago, and it was never done. I've got to play by the same rules as you play by, as everyone in this room, and it sounds like you guys kind of slipped under the radar and weren't playing by the rules. Now, if you did not know them, I still got to play by rules I don't know fair. I don't know the tax code, but I got to obey it.
Right. And we, we thank you, Mr. Egan. And also concerning those events, those events that we did schedule were free events. Free when, giving out turkeys on Thanksgiving, toys for tots, or it's a free event. We're, we're not charging anybody for any events that we are-
We have point, sir.
It's been made clear what is expected. I've got, Mr. President, there is a motion, my motion with a second, on the floor. I say we move on to motion.
Motion on the floor is, Mr. Hinky, is to continue this, postpone this and continue this public hearing to our next meeting, which is ten twenty-two eighteen.
Thank you, sir.
You got a second?
I refer to the question.
Same, same discussion.
We still have a, we still have discussion, correct, Mr. Hassel? Or should we hold up on the, the, um, postponement? We have one more question by Mr. Parsons.
If Mr. Hinky will wait for his motion to be placed, then yes, you can have further discussion. Otherwise, a motion to continue takes priority, and there's only supposed to be discussion.
Because what's going, everything you're saying, you're repeating, 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 and we all have different questions, legitimate questions, and you're repeating the same thing on and on and on and on.
Okay, Mr. President.
Mr. Parsons.
I will, I will defer to Mr. Parsons' question, as long as one question, and then we have the vote on the, on the postponement.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Hinky. Actually, I'm, I'm just not really, I don't have a question, I just have a statement. You guys' ultimate goal is to be successful with this. What you're hearing here today is, is that there's some other requirements that need to be met, that haven't been met here today. So if you want your ultimate goal, uh, to be, get this daycare approved, I, you know, I have no problems with the daycare at all. However, if, if there's still some murky waters dealing with the event center, and I know the landlord's probably concerned about that, because if there's agreements that there's supposed to be events past October, then he might be open to some liability if he decides not to have those events. So what I would do, I would even get a copy of Mr. Hassel's email here today, make sure you guys provide everything that Mr. Hassel has asked for. I know everything's frustrating, and you want to get it done right now, but if you try to do things right now, I don't think, you know, just by the tone of what I'm hearing right now, you're not going to reach your ultimate goal. And, and the whole purpose of you being here, so you can reach your ultimate goal. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Motion is to con, uh, to continue this and, uh, postpone this, this public hearing that was seconded by Ms. Pagano, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item, public hearing number one eight one zero zero two nine.
Notice is hereby given, the city council of the city of Florissant will hold a public hearing on the proposed budget for the city of Florissant, including the general revenue fund, capital improvement fund, park improvement fund, street improvement fund, sewer lateral fund, property revitalization fund, property maintenance fund, public safety fund, and court building fund for the fiscal year beginning December one, two thousand eighteen, in the council chambers at nine fifty-five, Ruse Saint Francois, on Monday, October eighth, two thousand eighteen, at seven thirty PM. All interested persons are invited to attend public hearing and may present their views concerning the proposed budget. Anyone with special needs should contact city clerk at least five days before, before said public hearing by calling eight three nine seven six three zero or two three eight three nine five one four two.
Thank you, city clerk. Uh, Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
You have the floor, Kimberly.
Hopefully, mine won't be a two-hour session again. So I prepared the budget, um, that I submitted, and just wanted to let you know that it's based on, uh, actuals through August and historical data from last year for the last quarter of seventeen. Um, and it looks like we've come in, uh, net, uh, a net profit, but after looking at some of the, um, entries, we saw some changes that needed to be made, which I submitted to you today, I, an adjusted budget. And that comes in at about five, about five hundred dollars, uh, in the red, five hundred thousand in the red. It looks like revenues are up, uh, from last year, and, um, as far as the budget, it looks like it's, it's, the revenues are above the budget from last year, and the expenses should be below for the end of the year. So I think I've presented a pretty fair, accurate budget for the next year, given that these are all projections, and we'll see how the year turns out.
Kim, how much should you say we're in the red?
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand, okay, thank you. Is that all you have? Before they close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this public hearing?
Thank you, counsel, Mr. Hassel, Ms. Goodwin, and Mayor Schneider. For the record, my name is Tim Lee. I live at one eight seven seven Don Donna Drive in Florissant, Missouri. And you're probably not going to be able to see this one, but, uh, past several years have been a financial struggle for the city of Florissant, and the council recognized that and knew that something needed to be done to decrease spending. Last year's budget meeting was a struggle, to say the least, but the Sil, city still needed over two point six million from reserves for that budget, and that was an increase over the two point two million needed from the reserves for the two thousand seventeen budget. I was anxious to see the mayor's proposed budget for two thousand nineteen and hoped and expected to see a decrease in spending. I was shocked to see that the proposed budget actually increased general fund expenditures for two thousand nineteen, and it's more than two, two million dollar increase from the proposed seventeen budget. You have this, but this is, uh, this is that information where I got it from. I next looked at the projected revenues for two thousand nineteen, and it showed an increase of revenue of more than two point seven million. And I said, how could that be possible? So I went to the farm, and it showed this increase, and I said, uh, I wanted to look at this a little bit more closely and find out how that came. In the past, you all may remember that page two and three of the, of the current budget and every prior year budget had a breakdown of where the revenue was coming from. And for some reason, in this year's budget, there's absolutely no breakdown of that. Last year, there were twenty-nine sources of revenue shown on two pages, and you're all aware that we always get that, but there's, there's nothing there. And so I wondered, you know, what's going on? What was, why was it left out? Where was that two point seven million dollars coming from? I started looking at the budget a little more closely and found out that on page A of the budget, it seemed to show that we were going to have a, um, a, a surplus of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. And I thought, well, that's great, we're not in our reserves. I s, I soon found a conflict in, in the budget numbers, and I passed that along to Kimberly Johnson, uh, when I discovered that. On page A of the budget, it showed recreation golf course revenue of seven hundred forty-six thousand. Page thirty-seven showed, excuse me, expenditures. It showed expenditures of seven forty-six. Page thirty-seven showed expenditures of eight hundred and seventy-two thousand. Page forty showed expenditures of nine hundred and forty-one thousand. So which one was correct? So it appeared to me that the nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollar was correct, and Ms. Johnson did confirm that graciously to me in an email, um, this morning. And I now understand that there's been some other things that have found since then. So now we're looking at a, a deficit of, I just heard the figure, half a million dollars. All budgets consist of two parts, projected revenue and projected spending. So as things change, you as a city council either need to cut spending or increase revenue. That's basic budgeting, whether it's at your home or your business or a city of Florissant. The city of Florissant seems to never cut spending, and in spite of requests from the city council to do so, it appears that there were no cuts this year, so it's no exception. They always seem to find ways to increase revenue. You're all aware that utility taxes went from three percent to seven percent over the past years. Park improvement sales tax doubled. Voters approved Prop A and Prop R, more revenue coming in. Most recently, the residents of Florissant agreed to a big sales tax increases for both Proposition S and Proposition P. The city council heard from residents before these elections, and they said they were worried about the old bait and switch going on, and they reminded us about how Missouri voters approved a lottery where all proceeds would go to education, but then later found out that all that was done was they reduced the general revenue spending for education. We assured residents that this would not happen. In fact, the city council passed ordinances requiring that proceeds from propositions be placed in dedicated accounts and not co-mingled with other general fund revenue as a mayor suggested be done. While legally, the city may have been able to do so, the city council wanted to show transparency and let everyone see where these funds were being spent. So voters approved Proposition S, a sales tax, a sales tax for, for streets. I remember the promise being made that these funds were going to be used for major street improvements, because there just wasn't enough general fund, funding to be able to take care of our aging streets. We also said the city would not reduce spending for streets, but you can see from the mayor's proposed budget, this is not so. On page eighty-seven of the proposed budget, they want to use two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to purchase salt and chemicals, as well as a brine plant. These are not major street improvements. Last year, the salt and chemicals came from account oh three three nine capital improvement fund. In addition, you'll see from the proposed budget, the, the proposal to decrease spending on street contracts by six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars over this year. And looking at page seventy-three of the proposed budget, it also reduces capital improvement street contracts by another five hundred and ten thousand. So the mayor's proposed budget reduces spending for street contracts by a million one hundred and sixty-five thousand and spends two hundred and forty-five thousand of Prop S funds to purchase, and reduces, and that helps to reduce funds that are coming from other funds. Were the residents right to be worried about the old bait and switch? I hope the city council does the right thing. Voters then approved Proposition S, P, a sales tax for police and public safety. Everyone agreed that we wanted a strong, state-of-the-art, well-financed police department. Again, the city promised not to reduce current spending on police. With the increase of two point six million from Proposition P, the mayor's two thousand nineteen proposed budget shows that the total police budget expenditures only increased a little over a million dollars from two thousand sixteen, which was the year before any funds from Proposition P. What happened to the other one point six million from Proposition P? Were the residents right to be worried about basement switch, bait and switch? I hope the city council will remember the promises that were made and do the right thing. So where was the two point seven million in extra revenue coming from, from the mayor's budget? That one line doesn't tell me anything. But when I got to see a copy of the mayor's budget message, it stated on page two, paragraph seven, that, and I quote, "General fund revenue would be down nearly five hundred thousand." And then I also quote, he said, "Projected revenue budget for the general fund is up two point one million more than in two thousand seventeen." Not sure why he compared it to two thousand seventeen, but again, in quotes, it said "all of the increase coming from Proposition P funds." These numbers made most sense to me. The budget I was looking at showed proposed general revenue in nineteen for twenty-six million, three forty-four thousand, compared to a two thousand seventeen actual revenue of twenty-three million oh fifty-one, which is an increase in revenue of three point three mil- to a 2017 actual revenue of 23,051, which is an increase in revenue of 3.3 million from '17, because that's what he quoted in his message, and compared to the budget, it's an increase of 2.7 from 2018. So it looks like we have an answer. The mayor's proposed budget increases revenue, I quote, "with all the increase coming from Proposition P funds." He also proposes to drop expenditures for street contracts from Proposition S as well as the Capital Improvement Fund and use Proposition S funds to purchase equipment as well as salt and chemicals. Finally, looking at page 89, the Sewer Lateral Fund, he wants to increase administrative cross-charges paid by, paid by that fund by more than $100,000. This, again, will reduce the general fund expenditures, and while I cannot find a breakdown of what these administration cross-charges will be, I sure hope that the city council will try to get this information and determine whether or not this big increase and all of that cross-charge is, in fact, being used to help the Sewer Lateral program. The city charter states that the mayor shall submit a budget, but it's the city council that ultimately has the responsibility of making changes and approving that budget. Is it, or was it unreasonable for the city council to ask the city to find ways to reduce spending by 10% in ways that least impact services to our residents? I asked that question last year, and we continued to ask it over numerous meetings. What if we only were able to reduce it 5%? That would still be a reduction in spending. The Parks Department did it last year, never the only department that did. The council did it last year, one, one account at a time, we went through and started reducing. So I asked the city council to do the right thing, honor the promises made to the residents with Prop S and Prop Fee Funds. I served with seven of you when these promises were made. We all talked about it, we all know that those promises were made. Mr. Parson, Mr. Harris, you weren't on when we did those, but I hope that you'll also honor that report. Don't let it be said to the residents, they were right about bait and switch and that they were duped. Thank you for your time and attention during the public hearing. I'm sorry this went a little long, but I felt I needed to speak my piece. I also wanted to make sure that you and everybody in the audience and the residents can see the truth. I'd like to have a copy of this added to the public record, and I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Councilman Shuldorff moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Councilman Syam. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Next item on the agenda is public hearing number 1810030.
Public notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Monday, October 8, 2018, at 7:30 PM at the Florissant City Hall Council Chambers concerning fiscal year 2019 Annual Plan for the Florissant Community Development Block Grant Program. Anyone who needs assistance or auxiliary aids for the meeting should contact Carol Almira at 314-839-76380 at least 24 hours before the meeting.
Thank you, Clerk. Ms. Q.
Yes, hi. My name is Christine Kyle, and I am a member of the Citizens Participation Committee. The CPC met on September 12th, where we were presented the recommended community development block grant programs and anticipated allocations for fund year 2019. The CPC committee unanimously approved the 2019 CDBG annual plan as presented, and it has been included in your packet. As you will see, we are continuing to fund programs that will address the city's priority needs that were established in the five-year consolidated plan. We did, however, add a new tree program to Project Impact. The Community Development Department identified a substantial need in the community for assistance regarding the aging tree population in the area. In order to address this growing safety concern, this program will allow for up to $3,000 to be utilized towards the migration of tree hazards. The funding for this program will come primarily from project income. And the proposed use of the CBDG funds are as follows. We are anticipating funding of $241,140. Those monies will be spent on the home improvement program at a cost of $171,140. Home improvement program mechanical, $60,000. There is no funding for Project Impact because they will not be needed because they have enough funds left over from previous years to, to start that tree program. And then for public services, it is $10,000 is being allocated to that, and all of that is in this little thing. The draft of the annual plan will be available on the city's website or at the Community Development Office for review, and will be open for a 30-day public comment period, which will end at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, November the 7th. We would like to encourage people to review the plan and submit any comments to the Community Development Office. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this public hearing? Seeing none, Councilman Egan moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Councilman Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Public hearing is closed. Next item on the agenda is old business. Bills for a second reading, Bill number 9433. I move for a second, second by, a second reading, second by Mr. Hinky. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $5,000 from the General Revenue Fund to account number 0154054010. Service awards to cover expenses for the annual employee appreciation lunch.
Councilman Pagano. Motion, move for a third reading, seconded by Councilman Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $5,000 from the General Revenue Fund to account number 0154054010. Service award to cover expenses for the annual employee appreciation lunch.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Bill number 9433 becomes ordinance 8459. Next item is new business, board appoint, board appointments. Mr. Parson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to appoint Ms. Debbie Bryant to the Personnel Commission.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Appointments made. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to reappoint to the Senior Commission Hector Nunez from Ward Two and Diane Shane from Ward Five.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Next item is requests. Councilman Jones moves to approve the request for a full package liquor with tasting for Schnucks Market Incorporated doing business at Schnucks located at 2183 Charbonneer Road, seconded by myself. Roll call, please. Discussion? Mr. Egan.
Do we know if the current one at Shop &amp; Save has a tasting on it? Because I thought at one point in time, we, we weren't allowing those tasting, but you're saying it does allow the tasting at the Shop &amp; Save?
All of the grocery stores have them, pretty much.
Okay, all right, thank you. No further.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Ms. Hinky?
No, never mind. Question was answered.
Make a motion to approve? By Mr. Jones, seconded by myself. Roll call, please.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Request passes. Next item is a request. Councilman Hinky moves to accept the application of transfer for special use permit number 7978 from Hertz Car Sales to Top Gear Auto LLC located at 1285 North Highway 67. Seconded by Mr. Syam. All in favor?
Aye.
Move for, move for discussion. Mr. Hinky.
Yes, petitioner, President, come forward. I've got a couple of questions for you. Suspender rules?
Motion to move to suspend rules. All in favor?
Aye.
Couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
That came up, and I know I spoke with you on the phone, we discussed it.
Yes, sir.
One of the things that I have on here, so the state of Missouri, it says the purpose for limited liability companies organized for used car sales and repair. Well, I know there's no repair facilities on this lot here.
Correct.
So, I mean, we're not going to be repairing cars out in the open.
No, sir. Cars will be washed and detailed at a month.
That's okay.
Yes, sir.
The other, more importantly, the question is, will there be cars for sales, sell here, pay here?
No, sir. No, sir, we have no intention.
So there will be no rental issues?
No, sir.
It's strictly a car sales lot?
Yes, sir.
I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hinky. Ms. Pagano.
Could you go over, you're going to detail cars there? Is that wash? You're going to wash cars?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, it's minor stuff.
Is that just mobile wash? You're hiring someone to come in, or are you detailing? I'm familiar with that.
Yes, ma'am.
That spot, that's why I'm just asking, because there's really no place. I know that they, they would have like mobile washes come in and just quick wash.
Well, it will mainly be us, I'll be, we'll be hiring people to basically wash the cars that we'll be having for sale, when it's needed, of small washes. More heavier stuff, we'll be sending off to different places.
Okay, and then your financing? Can you, or how are you doing the financing there?
Through financing companies, you know, we will be...
Through financing?
Yes, ma'am.
You're not going to buy here, pay here, or rent to own?
No, no, no.
Or anything like that?
No, ma'am.
Nothing like that?
No.
And then, so with the, I'm looking at the, the special use, and maybe Mr. Hessel could help me out with that? The, the transfer of it, on, what I'm worried about is Hertz's had the rental in there.
Correct.
You know, because they were rental, and if we're transferring, it's the same special use, right? Can I, can we amend that?
Correct. For the location and operation of... It's for the location and operation of a used car sales and car rental business. That's what Hertz had.
Right.
And the draft ordinance, excuse me, the draft bill that's on the agenda this evening is for the same thing, for the location and operation of a used car sales and service business, it doesn't include rental.
Right, so is there, can I amend that, that they, that it doesn't include rental? And that the service business isn't on Hertz's, and I don't know, service to me means you're, you're repairing cars. It doesn't mean you're washing, because every car dealership has somebody who comes in and washes their car, so I just don't want, that's why, why I'm asking, because this is different. Hertz didn't do that, you know, Hertz was a rental company, and if we're transferring, just clarify for me, please.
No, I agree. Karen obviously drafted the ordinance. I don't know candidly why it, it now moved from car rental business, let me rephrase that, from the operation of used car sales and car rental business to the operation of a used car sales and service business. I can't answer that. Maybe Karen can.
I was just, what was on the application, so I probably should have put the other on.
So is there any way we can amend, or I would like to amend, that it's just, honestly, all you're doing there is used auto sales?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
That's how I would just like...
I can do a substitute for the next meeting.
Does the substitute strike the first?
So no rental?
No rental and no service, because he's not doing service there, he's just washing cars, which is a normal activity of a dealer, I mean, to bring a hose out and squirt it off.
Exactly. That'll be the only point.
So, just no service.
So what I would propose is that, obviously, this is the public, the hearing portion of the process, the bill will be on the agenda for first reading. Now, if you want to address it for first reading this evening, in between now and the next meeting, Karen and I will clarify it by removing the words "and service business" both from the title and from section one.
Sure. I don't want to have to hold them up. I would just like to clarify this, because I was reading it two different ways.
No, you're reading it correctly, Jackie. And again, if you want to go forward with it this evening, we can amend it on the floor just as easily.
Okay.
I didn't think you wanted to do three readings, but if you do, we can take...
No, not necessarily, I don't, but I would, I would like to just...
Sure.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thanks for catching me.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hinky.
Yeah, so just for clarification, too, we are not going to amend this this evening. It will be amended and then put for approval at the next meeting, which is two weeks from tonight.
Two weeks from tonight.
Right.
It happens rarely, but once in a while, we have what I characterize as a clerical error. Usually, it's my fault, but...
Let's not get carried away.
How about Tim Cardinals?
Let's not get carried away here.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bills for the first reading? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
Eyes have it. Next item is bills for first reading. Bill number 9435.
Ordinance authorizing an amendment to Table 7A, speed limits on certain streets by reducing the speed limit on Lindsay Lane to 25 miles per hour.
Mr. Jones moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Egan. Is there any discussion? Mr. Egan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very thankful that Mr. Jones assisted and, and lobbied the Traffic Commission for this, and the Traffic Commission did very, very extensive deliberations on this. This is a road that is, has long been very, very dangerous for walkers and kids, and I'm surprised we don't have any more interest, injuries and incidents than we have had up there. I'm on this road literally three or four times a week, and it's been, it's absolutely hazardous, and I think that this will be well-received by our, our residents, and if we can get them to slow it down five miles an hour, it'll be a help. It won't solve things, but it'll be a help. And a good example, they had my run today, I had to avoid being struck twice at the crosswalks, but that has nothing to do with speed limit, just the general manner in which people are driving up and down Lindsay Lane. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Mr. Harris.
I want to say thank you to the Traffic Commission and the Police Department and Officer Kiefer, who attended that meeting, and very thoughtful discussion there, and just, there's not only that street, but there's some other streets that I know that have been reduced, and the Police Department's working hard, and so thank you, Mr. Jones, too, for advocating for that.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody that was involved, our Police Department, the Traffic Commission, all you council members for voting it through for me, and today I was on Lindsay Lane talking to one of my seniors when I seen Mr. Egan almost get hit. And I was on the other side of the street crossing my fingers, "Oh, my God, there's Joe, I hope he don't get hit today," so...
I said, "What happened?"
But Joe made it through safely, you guys, but this has been needing to be done. There's people that got to back their cars in and out of those streets. There's seniors that don't walk on Lindsay no more because of the speeding, and this is just something that needs... is just something that needs a long time overdue for the residents that live on Lindsay Lane, so, thank you for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Hanky.
Yeah, someone said, Mr. Egan, that, uh, you almost got hit twice today, but then Kelly gave up and went home, so.
We know why, Drive twenty-five. Thank you, Mr. Hanky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all oppose, eyes have it.
Ordinance authorizing an amendment to Table seven A, speed limits on certain streets by reducing the speed limit on Lindsay Lane to twenty-five miles per hour.
Mr. Jones moves for a third read, second by myself, Rokoff, please.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shuldorff.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Parson.
Yes.
Syam.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
For the final.
Ordinance authorizing an amendment to Table seven A, speed limits on certain streets by reducing the speed limit on Lindsay Lane to twenty-five miles per.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, Kirk, please poll the, clerk, please poll the council.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shuldorff.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Parson.
Yes.
Syam.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Bill number nine-four-three-five becomes ordinance eight-four-six-zero. Bill number nine-four-three-six.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of ten thousand dollars from Park's Utilities Account five-four-seven-two-six-zero-zero-zero to Bangor Utilities Account five-four-six-two-six-zero-zero-zero for the purpose of supplementing the Bangor Utilities Account for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Bill number nine-four-three-seven.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of twenty thousand dollars from Park Utilities Account five-four-seven-two-six-zero-zero-zero to Civic Center Utilities Account five-four-four-two-six-zero-zero-zero for the purpose of supplementing the Civic Center Utilities Account for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Bill number nine-four-three-eight.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number seventy-nine-seventy-eight from Hertz Car Sales to Top Gear Auto LLC located at twelve-eight-five North Highway sixty-seven for the operation of a used auto sales and service business.
Next item on the agenda is council announcements. Mr. Harris.
I heard from, uh, one of the, our neighborhood watch captains, that, that, the, the watch keeps growing, so, I want to encourage everybody to keep, keep joining, and, uh, the Neighborhood Wa- uh, Watch in Ward One is sponsoring a, another litter pickup event Saturday, October twentieth, along Malanfi Road, everyone is welcome, uh, we'll meet at Malanfi Garden Shopping Center, starting at nine AM, and we'll end by eleven, and, uh, I'm planning to, to grab some lunch at Spot House, if anyone wants to meet me there and chat, uh, later that afternoon, I'm looking forward to joining some of the other council members and community members for the Race to the Shrine, and, uh, there's also a new community event, uh, coming to Ward One Saturday, November third, at Malanfi Garden Shopping Center, which is being called, uh, Art in the Gardens, it will be an all-day event and include an art show, pop-up galleries, uh, collaborative art activities from twelve to four PM, for all ages, led by the organization Art Unleashed, and more, uh, and I understand portions of the, this event will raise funds for the Arts and Education Council, which offers grants to the local community for projects, including many in the Hazelwood and Ferguson Forest School Districts, so I hope to see everybody participate in that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Mr. Syam.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I just wanted to give the residents of Ward eight and nine an early heads up that, uh, next month, uh, Mr. Parson and I will be ho- hosting a, a ward meeting, um, it's going to be on Wednesday, November fourteen, at seven PM in the Egan Center, and, uh, just hope you can all make it out and, uh, bring your questions and concerns and issues and so on, and, uh, uh, we'll be there to listen, okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Syam. Mr. Jones.
Yes, uh, I'd like to give everybody a heads up, I'll be having a Neighborhood Watch at, uh, the JFK coming up, the Mailer will be going out in a week or so, I also want to remind everybody about Team Down the Street, our food pantry that helps everyone, uh, there's always somebody hungry morning, noon, or night, uh, you guys got some, uh, extra change, some extra canned goods, just anything, uh, they're always looking for volunteers, too, our trash situation in the city, this is going to be an ongoing thing, and I'm going to rattle the cage about that on a continuous basis here and outside of this, uh, meeting hall, uh, that we have a trash problem, and we need to do something about it, uh, this city is open for, uh, any ideas, uh, you know, two heads, three heads, four heads, fifty-two thousand heads are better than one, so if somebody gets an idea about something, come shoot it at us, uh, we are still looking for some kind of logo or something to stick on this trash thing, uh, but you're not going to hear me stop on that. Uh, now, the mayor just threw a loop at me, uh, uh, also, uh, Tommy threw a wrench at me, man.
A loss for Lawrence.
We will, right, we will have a table set up at the Fall Festival also about the trash, you guys, so if you guys got some kind of feedback, you can stop by our table, I appreciate you guys working the table, uh, which is our environmental commission, uh, and I think that's it, you guys, I got a couple of other things, but Tom threw a wrench at me, and, uh, it puts me in a different mood usually when he throws something at me, so, I'm going to have to let you go on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Pagano.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, that might have been so clear, um, well, the Fall Festival, I'm sure you'll hear it, so I don't want to, uh, brag about it, that it is Sunday, and they do have a chili cook-off, and so, before, I will not promote mine, although I was the award winner, winner last year, and, you know, Sweet and Spicy Delight is, is up there again, but it's okay, just so everybody knows, I just want you to taste it, um, but, um, Mr. Shuldorff and I, Ward, uh, five and Ward seven, will be having a ward meeting at the New Justice Center on November first at seven PM, so I hope that the residents can join us, so we can have you take a look and, um, discuss things that are going on in the neighborhood, so, that's it, Sweet and Spicy Delight.
Thank you, Ms. Pagano. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, the thing I forgot when the mayor threw a wrench at me like that, you guys, is, uh, Proposition D is coming up, and, uh, I am a hundred percent on board, uh, with that, that is a, a big thing that we've been needing for some time, uh, the mayor has pushed for that, which, uh, uh, he's did a very good job pushing for that, uh, we will be making an ordinance here very shortly on the Prop D money, so the Prop D money goes where it's supposed to go, where it is earmarked for, just like Proposition B, Proposition A and R, and Proposition S, that money is going to be spent where it's supposed to be spent, and spent only there, else you will be getting a big vote no from Timmy Jones, and I will scream really, really loud, you guys. And I could throw wrenches back, too, but, uh, like I said, you guys, I am on board with that, we do have signs, we're going to start pushing out on that, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Parson.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I just want to commend, uh, our McLaurin North High School, uh, FBLA, FBLA students for coming out and helping with the, uh, trash relief program that we had on, um, on September the twenty-ninth, I believe it was a success, uh, the students, uh, were, did very well, they were all very manner, mannerable, and it was a win-win for the city and for the students, they get to have their community service hours, and then, uh, you know, the city gets to have, um, you know, the streets cleaned up, one concern that I saw, and I, you know, I know we're, we've been talking about trash a lot here lately, is the things that I saw most, uh, in terms of picking up trash, were cigarette butts, and, uh, you know, it was, um, every single, in front of every single house, people are just flinging them out their windows or what have you, so I think that's really a concern and something that we may need to address here in the future, um, but, again, I want to, uh, just commend those students for coming out, too, to help us, uh, to get that done, and then additionally, I just want to, uh, invite, as Tommy, Syam already did, uh, the people to come out to our Ward Town Hall meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parson. Mr. Shuldorff.
Thanks, Mr. President, I would like to wish, Mr. Harris, good luck with the weather on the Fall Festival for Sunday, uh, you're in the spotlight on this one, and, as Ms. Pagano said, don't forget, the chili cook-off is at Click Heating and Cooling, and I think several people on this day has have entries, and I wish everybody luck in, in all that. Um, that's, there you go, um, the construction replacement of the bridge at Saint Anthony at Foreston Road has begun, please be aware of that, there, look at the detour signs, be careful, and hopefully with good weather and no issues, this project and this bridge will be replaced in mid-December. I would like to offer my condolences to the McLaughlin family on the passing of former councilwoman Betty McLaughlin last week, she was ninety years old, she was the first woman ever elected to the City Council in nineteen fifty-four, and her husband, Bob, also served, they are the only husband and wife team to serve on the Foreston City Council, she will be sorely missed, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shuldorff. Mr. Egan.
Thank you, Mr. President, I want to thank the good people on Florella Court, they had a nice neighborhood, uh, night out, national night out party the other night, it was well-attended by the, his honor the mayor, the chief, his command staff, several officers, and of course, Eddie the police dog, and it was a really good time to hang out with those neighbors and hear some of their concerns, and, uh, break a little bread with them, uh, secondly, I want to take a moment and express my, uh, on behalf of the community, uh, congratulations to Barb Hanky, who finished up over twenty years of service, United States Postal Service, who retired since we last, um, met, and I hope that she has a long, uh, retirement with, um, with, um, Gerard down the road here. Also, um, yeah, hope it's you, also, we had Officer Andy Quinones's, uh, father passed this last week, and we keep, uh, our thoughts and prayers towards him and his family, as they endure a, a very difficult time, and, uh, just ending up on the chili cook-off, if you thought there was corruption in Chicago, when you yell Capone era, look at me, get it, get it closer, I'm convinced this is rigged, but I'm going to keep trying, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Mr. Harris.
I'd say, I didn't know I was in charge of the weather for Fall Festival, but I accept that challenge, so thank you, Mr. Shuldorff, and also, I'll, I'll be in that chili cook-off as well, so look for me there.
Mr. Shuldorff.
Um, I would be remiss, I wanted to thank the mayor, uh, for having the flags lowered Friday and Saturday at Bangor Park and City Hall, and, uh, in honor of Ms. McLaughlin, and today also, uh, last year, Mayor and I renamed the pavilion after the McLaughlins at Bangor Park, and I wanted to thank you for that, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Shuldorff. Uh, yes, I'd like also to thank the, um, the other night, I guess Tuesday, when it was a national night out on Love Lane, they had a, um, wonderful block party, a lot of people from the neighborhood showed up, very good event, uh, if you own a firearm, make sure you keep your firearm secure, don't leave it in your vehicle, if you're going to be a, a firearm owner, make sure you're a responsible firearm owner, uh, this week is Fire Prevention Week, so make sure you check your house for fire hazards, uh, working smoke alarms is one of your biggest deterrents for fire to save lives, so make sure your smoke alarms are all working a hundred percent, uh, join your Neighborhood Watch programs, very good program the city has, thank you. Mr. Mayor, Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, yeah, Mr. Shuldorff, that was, uh, I went to Betty's funeral mass, and the family was very appreciative of the, uh, of the naming of the pavilion in honor of their parents, uh, Betty was, uh, as you said, the first female council member in nineteen fifty-four, uh, and I served with, uh, Bob, he was on the council when I was first elected, uh, the only husband-wife team that I know of that, uh, served, um, I have a unpleasant, uh, task that the, uh, uh, Fall Festival Committee asked me to convey to, uh, all the council members who've been, uh, bragging about their chili, uh, entries, you've been disqualified.
I didn't do that.
Mayor, I agree with you.
And it's going to be the best Fall Festival ever this Sunday, and, Mr. Harris, don't let me down, don't let the residents down. Before that, we have another, uh, function this weekend, we got the Food Truck Night Friday at the Knights Grounds, uh, the last one was tremendously attended, and, uh, Andrew, you're in charge of the weather for that, too. The deadline for the, we had the pub, public hearing tonight for the Community Development Block Grant Funds, the deadline for public input is five PM Wednesday, November seventh, uh, so you can, uh, our Community Development Office is located in the Government Center at the corner of, uh, Saint Francis and Foreston Road, and, uh, we're going to have the Dare costume party for the Dare Age, uh, students, uh, on Friday, October nineteenth, at JFK, that's a really good time, they have, uh, DJ and pizza and lots of fun, we have four events per, every year to promote Dare, this one, the one, the Project Liftoff at Christmas, the skate in March, and then the, uh, swimming in July, and, uh, we have the Race to the Shrine on the twentieth, uh, and, uh, I think, uh, Joe Egan is going to be running this year, you're ready for five K, Joe, when you run in, in our neighborhood, you don't look like you're ready for five K, because you love it so much, and, uh, let's see, hosting, we also, on October twenty-fifth, we're actually going to have the honor of hosting the Municipal League at the Justice Center, this will be, uh, mayors, city managers, and council members from, uh, the entire Saint Louis County region, and we're, we're also going to be honored with, uh, a guest, I can't remember the little girl's name, if anybody else does, there's a little girl that was at the Minis- Missouri Municipal League in Branson, and I think she's from Wentzville, and she wants to have ice cream with all the mayors in the state, so she, we're going to have duels for her and everybody else, uh, on the twenty-fifth. And then, uh, I think the spooktacular, uh, we're going to ha- we usually have Halloween, um, activities on Halloween night, uh, this year, we're actually going to have them on October twenty-seventh, that's Saturday, October twenty-seventh, so we'll have, uh, a boo-bash, that's a family, uh, gathering from twelve to two at James Egan Center, so, uh, you can have like a little Halloween experience on October twenty-seventh, and then on October thirty-first, Halloween night, we're actually going to have something more for the, uh, for the family, again, it's going to be a swim and skate, but we're not going to have the trick-or-treat type things on that night, and then, uh, then the seniors are going to have, uh, October twenty-fifth, they're going to have their Halloween costume party, and probably Peggy Hogan will be dressed as a nun with a ruler, wish out for her. And, and, uh, here at City Hall, we're collecting, um, soldiers' wish list items, uh, for our troops, so if you have something that, uh, the troops could use, call our, uh, dispatch, our, uh, receptionist at nine-two-one-five-seven-hundred, and they can give you details on what we're, uh, collecting for the troops, but we need to have them by October thirty-first, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Next regular meeting for the City Council will be on Monday, October twenty-second, twenty eighteen, also, the first budget meeting for the City Council is scheduled for Saturday, October third, at eight AM inside.
Thirteen, twenty-two.
Thirteenth.
What did I say?
Third.
The third, we're done past that, see, we already had it, nobody knows about it. Saturday, October thirteenth, at eight AM, right here in the council chambers.
Eight-thirty. Yeah, I thought it was eight-thirty, eight. That, didn't, nobody told me it was.
Why, who said eight-thirty?
I always said eight.
I thought we said eight. Eight AM. Mr. Egan moves to adjourn regular meeting, second by Mr. Shuldorff, all in favor?
Aye.
All oppose, eyes have it, thank you, everybody.
I told you.
That's tomorrow.